Good morning. It is 9:01 a.m. Welcome to the September 6, 2017 City Council Meeting. Let the record reflect that Nancy Craftke is excused. Please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, help us to see our opening prayer as the conversation with you, believing you bear us and care about us, what we say and do here. Remind us that you are a perfect Father who listens carefully to his children and desires the very best for us in our work here. We thank you for this family of citizens in which we belong and ask you bless us, hold us in the palm of your hand, and protect us from the wrath of Hurricane Irma. Amen.
And today we have Jessica Farley sitting in for City Attorney David Levin. Welcome.
Thank you.
First, we have a 30-year service award.
We do. Let me just turn my cellphone off. Okay. So, we have a lot of blue shirts here today, and they're all from the water plant.
They're shy. Come on in.
Don't worry, they'll be back at the water plant because of what's been going on. We'll have, we will have water. Anyways, 30 years of service. Jim Moss, come on up, Jim. And we will...
Thank you.
Turn around, we got to take, Lisa's got to take... Gold watch? It's in the man. It got stuck with Hurricane Irma.
Hi, good morning. Tom Jackson for the record. Congratulations, Jim. Jim Moss started with the city in August of 1987, working in the maintenance section of the wastewater treatment plant. Jim is dual-certified, if you will. He can, he can do both. One of several of our employees that can do that. When Jim was in wastewater, he was in the maintenance chief position. In 1994, he transferred, I wasn't even born yet, to the water treatment plant in the maintenance section where he is today. And he serves there and does a little bit of everything, electrical, mechanical, physical, contracting. He even, he even does, you know, employee counseling as necessary. And his lovely wife Donna, is Donna with you today, or?
She's over here.
Oh, I didn't see her hidden there. Good, good. Anyway, congratulations, Jim. Thank you.
Congratulations. You want to say a few words?
Okay.
We'll keep us patched together, and we'll, we'll be fine. Thank you. Now, we will recess as the City Council and shortly...
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry. Introduction of Board or Committee member nominees. Anybody have their name in for a board or committee? Thank you.
John Burridge, I'm Board of Zoning Appeals Chairman. I'm speaking on behalf of Ed Zapki, who couldn't make it today. And I have served with him on many boards, one, you know, MPO, CAC, CAC Board, Planning Commission. He was SEC Chair. And he would be an ideal person that I would like to have on our zoning appeals board, and I hope you will give him serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Board or committee member nominees? Okay, seeing none, now we will recess as the City Council and shortly reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Okay, we will call this meeting to order and let the record reflect that Commissioners Craftke and Wykel are excused. All other officials and commissioners are present. Okay, first, we have Citizens' Comments, CRA Agenda Items Only, which would be the Project Status Report, the Approval of the Minutes, and the Approval of the FPL Solar Now Program Amendment. Anybody like to speak on those items? Okay, seeing none, we will move into the Project Status Report.
We're having technical difficulty. We did the same report. We have not much update since the one in August 23rd, but we do want to highlight September. The municipal Marina, since it's right now, this is the same report we had in August. Again, same report we had, pretty much had in August. So, Lashley Park, we do have a slight amendment on the agenda today, but demolition was supposed to have started yesterday. It did. It started yesterday, as you could see. There, we're getting ready to do the canopy over the stadium seating and then the waltley stage. So, that's starting.
Are they doing them both at the same time, or not? One and then one? Yes?
Both at the same time.
Okay.
Good news is that on the, on the parking by the, in Lashley Park, the added parking, we do not have to get a new stormwater permit.
Oh, good. They found it? Somebody found it?
No, they're just not requiring it.
Okay.
The bad news is it took us so long, we are not comfortable bidding it out, getting a contractor on site, and getting the work done before the event season.
That's great.
Knowing how our experience has been with a lot of our contractors lately. We're going to wait until next May.
Good, good decision.
The concrete slab has been poured for the fresh market. Shed's been ordered, so that's moving along. Again, with a lot of work still going on, the brickers are working their way towards the entrance on Harvey. Trees are in. Seawall cap's been ordered. You know, some of the rain has delayed some days, but they're, they're working away. Playground's been issued their notice to proceed at a pre-construction meeting, so everything on go there? Everything on go. That's it.
Questions? Lynn?
May I ask what a seating wall cap is?
Sure. It's a, you know, in Gilchrist Park, we wanted to have a seating area so you could at least sit and, and watch the harbor walk. We have those seating wall caps along the harbor walk around the Punta Gorda Waterfront Hotel.
Okay.
Could sit down and, and observe.
Somebody asked me if it was a typo, and it should have said seawall cap. That's why I wanted to...
No, no, it's a seating wall.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Howard? Okay, seeing none, we will move into the Approval of the Minutes.
Move Approval. Second.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have Approval of the Second Amendment to the Solar Lease Agreement for the Solar Now Program.
Good morning. Mikael Finkel, paralegal for the record. This is an amendment to the agreement that you already proposed. It only affects this property between City Hall and the City Hall Annex Building. There was a platted alley that didn't have a legal description, so they're just adding some wording about the 10-foot platted alley to the agreement to make sure there's connection, a connection from where the project is to these two buildings. And there's, this is, if you remember, because this project is also in the CRA, it's on the CRA Agenda as well as on the City Council Consent Agenda, both need to sign.
So, it just affects this property here?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions?
No. I move Approval.
We have a motion of second to approve the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Citizens' Comments on CRA. Anybody like to speak on the Community Redevelopment Agency? Okay, seeing none, we will take Commissioner's Comments.
Jaha. I'm just glad that we've decided to hold off on the Lashley Park improvements. I think that will make a huge difference to those who are having events in the spring. There's been a lot of comments about it. Thank you.
I just want everybody to stay safe.
Thank you. Karen, would you like to take a minute to announce the CRA vacancy and how, what the process is for people to apply?
Mr. Commissioner Wykel's term ends in November, and as you know, at the last meeting, he announced that he would not be seeking reappointment because he's leaving the area. We are advertising, helping the county to advertise. This is a county representative sitting on the Punta Gorda CRA, and the process is fairly simple. I don't have her information in front of me, but we have a contact. If anyone needs it, they can contact me. We, they contact the county for an application form. I've seen the application form. It's very straightforward, nothing unusual, no special requirements, just the application form. And similar process that we use for, for boards. The county would be in touch with the, with the, anyone who applies. They would be invited to attend the commission meeting when they make the appointment, if they would like to introduce themselves. And then the county makes the recommendation to the city, and then City Council makes the final appointment. So, that would be a four-year term, starting in November.
And they do not have to be a city resident? Is that correct?
That's correct. They need to, they would be, need to be a county resident.
And elector, or like, registered to vote? Does that apply too? Or do we know?
I did not see that as a requirement.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any comments?
No comments.
Okay. Seeing no more comments, we are adjourned. Okay, we will now reconvene as the City Council, and we have three public hearings, two resolutions, and a, a, what do we call this? An ordinance repealing? Yeah. No, this is not, that's not an emergency?
No, we're going to add...
Add this up here?
This goes up here.
Okay. So, we actually have four public hearings. We have two resolutions, then GA 04-17, and then we're moving C4 up to A4, which is the emergency ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda declaring a local state of emergency. So, that will be a standalone public hearing. Okay, so first, we have a resolution.
This is the second reading of a resolution and ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, which I shall read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida approving a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2015 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan as amended and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Again, this is the second reading. We, it's for sidewalk improvements with leftover CDBG funds.
Any questions before we open the public hearing? This is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on this resolution, now would be the time. This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this resolution, now would be the time. Third call. Anybody like to speak on this CDBG block grant?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move Approval of Agenda Item 3A1. Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you. And next, we have another resolution.
This is the second reading of a resolution and ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, which I shall read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida approving a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2016 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan as amended and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
This is the other remaining CDBG funds to do sidewalk improvements.
Any questions? This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this resolution? Public hearing. Anybody like to speak? Last call for anybody who would like to speak on the 2016 CDBG block grant action plan.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously, and I need a motion for approval. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. And next, we have GA 04-17.
This is the first reading of a resolution and ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda that I will read by title only. GA-04-17, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida amending Chapter 17, Public Utilities, Section 17-7, Water System Monthly Rates, Fees, and Charges, and Section 17-18, Waste Water System Monthly Rates, Fees, and Charges, Punta Gorda Code, to remove the scheduled rate increases for fiscal year 2018, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
For the record, Dave Drury, we had this put in back last year, and we found, due to increased revenues, we found it was not necessary to implement the 4%. And so, and we went to Utility Advisory Board about it. They liked the idea of just, we're going to get rid of it for now, and if we have to, we're going to look at it again in the future. But right now, we didn't see the need for it, and so that's why we're removing it.
Thank you. Questions for the Finance Director before we open the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on GA 04-17, now would be the time. Second call for anybody to speak on GA 04-17. Last call. Anybody like to speak on this ordinance?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move Approval of GA-04-17.
We have a motion and, did you hear the second?
Yes.
Yep, okay. We have a motion of second to approve GA 04-17. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. And next, now, we are going to take what was listed under C4 as A4.
This is an emergency ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, which I will read by title only. An emergency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida declaring a state of local emergency and providing for emergency governmental operations related to Hurricane Irma if deemed necessary, and in conjunction with Charlotte County, providing for termination of emergency powers, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Before we have staff do an overview of what each department is doing, this is an ordinance that we do, we've done this a few times before, regarding state of local emergencies in conjunction with the county. We'd like council to adopt it. Basically, it turns the reign over to operations to the city manager. And, and then after you adopt it, we'd like to have some time where our Emergency Management Director can get up, talk about the process we use when it comes to hurricanes and events like this, and then all the departments will chime in as to what we're doing.
Okay. So, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this emergency ordinance, now would be the time. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this emergency ordinance? Last call for anybody who would like to speak on the local state of emergency ordinance.
Do we leave the public hearing open, or?
I just opened it, so now we need to close.
I know, but I mean, if we're staff members and so...
No, no.
Okay. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Okay.
Now, we need, that was closing the public hearing.
Oh, excuse me.
We need a motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the emergency ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. I know.
Ray Briggs, Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director for the city. So, I'm going to, I'm going to say, based on the consensus in the room, that everybody has taken shelter and they've evacuated, so maybe that's, that's good. So, a big round of applause for that. Large-scale event, you'd be, it'd be tough to not follow this with the media and social media and everything that's going on. And so, I just kind of wanted to bring everybody up to speed on what we're doing. I won't steal the thunder of the folks that are really doing the work, the other department heads in the room. So, been a productive weekend, productive couple of days so far this week. Here's the way this work. All, all city departments are working on their emergency operations plan. So, we have one in place, they've dusted it off. So, again, I won't steal their thunder as to what the individual departments are doing. On the fire department's side, we are participating in both state and federal conference calls twice daily to see what resources are available to us, you know, should, you know, should the inevitable kind of happen here. So, one of our concerns is that with, with Harvey, with Houston, with Louisiana, a lot of the federal resources that we have experienced and that have been available in the past, we're concerned that they're not going to be as available to us here. The message we've been sending out is, you know, typically, we say be prepared, three to, you know, three to five days, food, water, all that stuff. Be prepared to be without water, without power for seven to 14 days. Again, look at some extended times. We've had great participation when it, you know, as far as evacuations and folks coming to us with, you know, questions and answers. I will tell you, we are at a record high for special needs list. The way that works, there's a special needs list that's countywide, and folks opt into it. They sign up for it, they sign their family members. And what that means is that during an evacuation, that folks that are on that special needs list, you know, they're maybe oxygen-dependent or homebound, that we provide transportation. We get them picked up and brought to a special needs shelter where there's some medical staff, there's oxygen, there's, there's feeding, all of that. So, there's been great response to that, and that's statewide, more than ever, ever before. So, that's, that's very positive from the fire department's perspective. One of the things we do is that we contact all ALFs and nursing homes in the city and say, okay, we have your plan, but where are you? What are we really doing this time? And so, that's been done. We've had great commitment from them as to what they're doing and where they're to help them with their evacuations, should that be the case. Federal resources, like I said, we're, we're kind of lined up. We've got two state task forces that are, that are in place, both out of Hillsborough, and the Lee County one has, has gone to Texas, but they're on their way back, I guess, so that's, that's working as well. So, what we're doing, we're coordinating with the county, and we send out a unified message as far as our PR goes, and as to, again, whether it be evacuations, where the storm is, what we're doing, send out a consistent message. IT has certainly helped us in that respect. We've changed our, our Facebook and our webpage and all of that, so residents know where to go, and, you know, there's a, some questions and answers there. So, again, we're just going to continue to watch it. We've had a little, a little good news at the 7:00 a.m. Again, don't buy into that. The 1:00, the 1:00 p.m. could change, you know, exactly back. So, we're just going to plan for the worst and hope for the best. And with that, I'd like some of the department heads to come up and kind of give you an update.
Can I go first?
Yeah, go right ahead.
I'm going to have Dave Drury for the record. I'm going to have Marion come up and talk about procurement. What we're doing in finance is we're preparing the payroll now, which is a week early. Now, we won't be paying the employees early, I'm just, but we will have the payroll prepared. I just wanted them to hear that, that they're not getting hit early. No justice. Billing collections, they're moving the billing up a little quicker just so that they're not in the middle of trying to do, put a bill out in on Friday or Monday, so we just want to get that up a little quicker. Oh, we've got the FEMA forms out to all the employees. We've given instructions on what they need to keep track of and how to fill them out. And Marion, you want to get up and talk about procurement, please? He's taking notes.
Good morning. Marion Pace, Procurement Manager for the record. On August 23rd, council, thank you very much, approved our debris management and recovery services contract along with debris monitoring. The debris management will come, will be the ones responsible for taking off all the debris, but also, we do have ancillary services just in case some of our contractors or we're having a hard time trying to find resources, so they'll, they'll be there for us on that. I have heard back from both Crowder Golf and Saris that they are ready to come in and help us out, so that is a good thing. We do have some solicitations out on the street at this time. They're basically emergency solicitations, because as a forethought, with Hurricane Charlie, we were not able to dispose of our, any of our waste in the Charlotte County landfill because of the amount of our waste that we would have generated, and we had to take it to Okeechobee. So, with these new federal regulations, we would not be able to get away as easily with doing so without a contract in place. So, there's, and a few other things. We do have avant in line to begin waterproofing the retail section of the Herald Court Center starting tomorrow. We've, we're receiving the initial delivery of water and MREs by Friday for emergency staff. We've distributed our micro purchase forms, which is new for the new federal regulations, and we have cautioned our, cautioned city staff that normal contracts that we would be using, such as Home Depot, Office Depot, that we piggyback national consortiums, we will not be able to go directly to them because those contracts have not been federalized. So, we're working on some of those things to try and get everything in line.
For the record, John LeBeau, Urban Design Interim Manager. We are preparing, staff is assisting with all of the departments in producing signs, getting maps ready for assessments for after the storm, should we, should they be needed, and fielding the phone calls as they come in. I'm going to have Lisa Hanen come in, come up and speak about zoning and what they are doing.
Good morning, Lisa Hanen, interim zoning official. We're working with, code staff is working with the building department. Building department sent out a mass email to all the contractors to secure all their job sites, empty dumpsters, secure the materials and such. We're fielding those phone calls, and the code enforcement officers are also following behind and sweeping their areas to make sure there's no issues with outdoor storage or things like that.
Good morning, Rick Keeney for the record. Public Works, we began putting up shutters yesterday. We've got the shutters up at the Public Works Utility Campus. We've been going over our campus, securing all our items, checking our saws, filling gas cans, you know, just prepping all our vehicles and, and our equipment. As far as things out in the field, we've, we're not starting any new projects, of course. We are buttoning up any existing projects we have going on. We've told contractors to clean up and, and, you know, don't do any more work until we, we get past the storm. Sanitation, typically Thursday is their, their day off. We're going to bring in some crews. We're getting a lot of calls for yard waste. A lot of people are trimming, are trimming now. So, we're getting a lot of calls, so we're going to bring the crew, some crews in tomorrow to try to get ahead of the curve on the yard waste, the bulk items. And then again, at this point, we don't expect the winds to be bad on Saturday, but, you know, we feel it's going to be safe Saturday, and the sanitation should be able to work. But if the storm was to speed up or anything like that, we'd have to monitor that. But we're planning on, on working as scheduled. Sandbags, that's available at the dog park. I think Ray had a fire truck there this morning.
There's already a line.
So, we, you know, we basically brought in a couple loads of, of sand. We put the bags there. The, the residents have to fill them themselves and get some sandbags. We're evaluating our city vehicles, again, where the storm goes. We don't want to put all our eggs in one basket, so we're going to deploy equipment to different areas if, if need be, meaning the wastewater or water plant, the parking garage, and, and Public Works. We've coned off area on the third floor of the parking garage for city vehicles. We've coned off area on the third floor of the parking garage for city vehicles. We are gonna start shuttering City Hall today. You may have seen the boom truck out there, so we need that to get up to the second floor area. So, we'll, we'll begin that today. Got some diesel fuel ordered for the public safety building. We have four employees who will be deployed to the fire department as part of the first-in team. So, they will be there representing Public Works. And as Marion mentioned about the Herald Court Center, that's in place for tomorrow. When those barriers go up, the businesses can't do business because it's floodproofing is what it is. So, we don't wanna take that lightly because once it's up, they're pretty much closed. So, so we're monitoring that and just, so you're aware, they may be shut down tomorrow. Unless the storm makes a really right turn, and we wouldn't have to do that. And that's it. Thank you.
Who would be the person to ask regarding parking in the parking garage? Someone asked me about that.
We're taking a lot of calls on that. Let's have Ray or Mikhail, who wants to chime in?
Policy on parking cars in the parking garage, for six.
Mikhail Finkel. The, the parking garage is still gonna be public parking. I think as a staff, we have decided to kinda follow along with the boat mooring. So, once there is a hurricane warning, we would not enforce the 24-hour parking rule. I believe it's the flat surface of the third floor will be for city vehicles and equipment. So, that will be cordoned off. And then, I believe, once the all-clear is given, we would put that 24-hour parking back in advance. 'Cause we've, we've had some requests to park, you know, they're leaving town, they wanna park it there for a week, and that's, it's not possible. We don't want them to start parking there today because we do have downtown businesses that use that parking garage for their employees. So, that was our rationale.
Okay, but they will be allowed to park in the garage when the storm is imminent?
Yes, it's public parking, first come, first served.
Okay, thank you.
It will be popular.
Yeah. There's a lot of people that don't have enough garage space.
Good morning. Jason Giascani, interim police chief. The police department has several policies in place already for hurricane plans and unusual occurrences. So, we have, have been reviewing those policies, have sent them back out to our employees. And they also go out every June 1st, the beginning of hurricane season, just as a reminder. We have a total of 43 vehicles and two boats that we've gotta make sure that we have proper locations for. We're gonna use the parking garage and other locations throughout the city, as others have said, to make sure we spread our fleet around so we don't have them all in one place. We're reviewing current events that are going on, identifying what has to be canceled and what may be able to continue. We're relocating equipment, cleaning things out of our wash bay and so forth, just kind of, you know, bunkering things down. We have been out to our Emergency Operations Center there on Airport Road. We, I believe all you know, we have a backup dispatch center out there. We typically deploy about once a month out there, just to kinda make sure things are going okay. We have had our supervisor go out there just yesterday, and we'll be out there again this morning, working with IT to work out a couple bugs that we have, just to make sure that that location is up and operational and ready for usage. And in conjunction with the fire department and IT, we'll be setting up the Emergency Operations Center location at the police department, the training room over the next couple of days. We are currently working on staffing. We call it Alpha Bravo, basically, where we go to a full 12-hour, you know, basically, half the department goes on a 12-hour shift at night, half the department's on a 12-hour shift during the daytime. And we're working out logistics, putting in, you know, proposed plans in, in, in the event that we have to actually execute those. I have my detectives following up with the state attorney's office. Unfortunately, one of the things that we have seen, especially after Hurricane Charlie, when a storm hits like this, is the aftermath and all the contractors come in, contractor fraud skyrocketed after Hurricane Charlie. And something that we were doing almost nothing more in our detective division than just that, subsequent to that. So, we're touching base with the state attorney's office, making sure we're up on all the laws and are prepared to respond accordingly in, in the event that that comes up. And outside of that, we're just, you know, going through our normal preparedness, making sure everybody's got their family plans in place and so forth.
I have a question. Charlotte High is still planning to play their football game Thursday night, so I had talked to Ray about that. I don't know what kinda, I got the robo-call last night from Steve Dinesio saying that today they would be making more decisions. So, I mean, I know we always have detail out there and so forth, so what?
Yeah.
Do you know anything more or less?
The detail, it was supposed to be Friday, and we had the detail filled. We are kinda scrambling a little bit to make sure that we have the proper resources out there. It has been rescheduled for Thursday night. Right now, we are, like you, we're waiting to hear what the school district's going to do if they cancel it. If they cancel school, I would suspect they'll cancel the football game, but we're waiting, and, but we'll make sure we have the resources there as appropriate.
Thank you.
Heaven forbid the football game doesn't go on.
The kids wanna play. I mean, it's hard to tell kids you can't play.
Good morning. Tom Jackson, Utilities Department, for the record. To overlap what the Public Works Director said, we're doing a lot of stuff. They're taking care of the campus, but we also are fueling vehicles and positioning vehicles, spreading them around so that we don't have all our eggs in one basket in case there's a storm surge or in case there's other issues. The chief and I talked for quite a while yesterday, going through our plan as well as the overall city plan. We got, and it was interesting, a call from one of our customers. She wanted to know when we were gonna turn the water off. We have, we have no intention of turning the water off. In Hurricane Charlie, the water did go off because we had so many leaks, we couldn't pressurize the system any longer. And we were just, we were running water out at, at a rate of 3 million gallons a day out onto the ground. And so, that, we needed to hold some back to make sure we had water in case of fire, in case other things. So, we do not have any intention of turning the water off. Hopefully, the plant is hardened to the point now, after lessons learned from Hurricane Charlie, that the issue, if we do have to turn it off, will not be as a result of something we missed at the plant. I feel very confident in that. Again, the issue could be that we have so many line breaks. We had, we had 11,000 line breaks after Hurricane Charlie. And the issue is to try to, to keep pressure up in the system with that many line breaks, it becomes impossible. But there are no plans. The water plant is on Friday afternoon, Saturday morning. We'll fill all of the storage tanks to the very top. We don't routinely run them completely full. We float them up and down, we let them drain, and we fill them back up. 'Cause our goal is to turn them over within 24 to 36 hours, but we'll be filling those up. The other side of the coin, the wastewater folks will be emptying all their tanks. We have to be careful not to mix those two concepts up. They'll be emptying all their tanks on Saturday morning. I can't think of anything else. I've asked the water treatment plant, we have bottled 500 bottles of water yesterday. We have another 500 bottles we're holding back to wait on our briefings and get a little closer Friday or Saturday. We could potentially have 1,000 bottles of bottled water for city crews and city staff, as well as citizens that may need that going forward, so.
Thank you. IT will be watching our, obviously, our technology. And they will be available to come in once the storm goes through, however it handled. We have set up a page on our website. Alicia, wanna talk about it? Alicia Oates is managing our communications on the website. Mikhail Finkel is her backup. We always have backups. We, we will, by the way, we will also be including in the weekly report Friday, kind of a synopsis of what we're doing. Not as long as what we're doing here, and we only have so many pages, but we'll, we'll have a, a synopsis of our preparedness that you can send out to everybody.
Okay, Alicia Oates. You'll notice in, under the spotlight, we have a section of watching Hurricane Irma. And as we gather information, we are posting it. So, we will be updating forecasts as they are updated. We've talked about resources. At this point, we're hoping most people are already, you know, somewhat prepared. So, a lot of this is, we're kinda past the point, but we still have the resource available, which is just a, a list of community links, Red Cross, all of that, county resources. Shelters, there's a link to the county's, the EOC, their refuge, refuge centers.
Refuge illustre, or.
Yeah. But that's listed under the shelters, so you can see, once they become available, you go there, it will let you know their status. We talk about special needs, which is just a reiteration of what we've already talked about. Briefings, as they go out, we will go ahead and have a link directly to them. We talk about sandbags. Then, we just, we'll go ahead and put today's changes on there too. FAQs, as we get calls with common questions, we're gonna go ahead and try and post them over there. So, hopefully, that will help with the call volume. This is where we're at. And this also, we'll have news items that go out, which reiterate what's being put on this page. And those will automatically go to Facebook and Twitter. And we are also reaching out to Nextdoor. And I've noticed there's been a lot of activity on Nextdoor. People are talking about their boats right now. That's the common question.
Yeah.
So, a wrap.
Why don't we?
Revisit that.
You wanna talk about the boats?
Sure. Ray Briggs, for the record. So, in the city, again, unlike many communities, we don't, we have a cross-tying policy. And a lot of communities, if you remember, we went through this many years ago. And many communities choose to just kinda let, let the community work it out, which doesn't always work out very well. Usually ends up with a law enforcement issue. So, we decided that, that we wanted to come up with a policy, then it wasn't, when folks could cross-tie or not was not dependent upon my opinion or Howard's opinion or somebody else's. We wanted to tie it to something, maybe somebody smarter than I, right? So, it's tied to the National Hurricane Center watches and warnings. So, at the point that we go in, I'll just kinda briefly go through the policy. At the point, our community, Ponte Gorda is in a tropical storm or hurricane watch. At the point we enter a watch, then we will send out a Code Red, excuse me, you know, to the community that says, hey, we will allow cross-tying in the canal system at a warning. So, it gives, so it gives those folks who would like to take their, their vessel out and maybe put it on the hard, trailer it, get it out of the system before folks cross-tie. And that could be anywhere from, I mean, on the short end, it could only be a few hours, but more than likely, it's 12 to 24 hours notice to say, okay, at, at a warning, we are going to allow cross-tying. And then, so we send that message out through Code Red. When we reach a warning, then we send it out again. And we say, hey, we told you back, you know, at the watch, you're, so you're officially allowed to cross-tie in the canal system. And, and there's also some information on the Ponte Gorda Waterfront Owner's Guide. So, there's a diagram, a matrix, and all of that on there, but it, it's worked out well. Do we, do we get questions on it? We do, because, again, it is a formal policy versus just no policy. And then, folks are asked to undo that cross-tying. We, we added just as soon as, safely, as soon as they can. We didn't tie 10 hours to it or 12 hours to it or something like that because, you know, we found that our past experience was folks were out there trying to do it while there's still 40 mile an hour winds. You know, these storms are so unpredictable that, you know, it's just tough to say. So, that's our policy. At a watch, we give them notice. At a warning, they're able to cross-tie. Complicated enough?
If we could post that on here or a link to the, I think it's an ordinance or whatever form it's in.
Okay, we sure can.
Yeah.
We can sure make that happen.
Mm-hmm.
No problem.
Ray, quick question. Last time we had a bad hurricane, there was no way to communicate with people after the storm. How are we going to communicate that you have to uncross tie your boat?
Right, well, we're, we're limited by the resources that, you know, so, again, we will do the same, Facebook, social media, webpage, Code Red. So, what we, again, once it seems reasonable that folks should be uncross-tied, if that's the right word, then we'll send it out. Again, in the past, we did, I think we had like a 12-hour mark or something on it. What we found were residents, they were trying to follow that. So, at 11 and a half hours, they were out in their john boats trying to untie, and there's literally still 30, 40 mile an hour winds. And so, we, we got some negative feedback on that and said, all right, we'll send out a message. You know, when, when it's, when it is reasonable, when it's safe. So, we'll do it, Code Red, as well as the, all the other medias that we're using.
Okay, but 12 hours would normally be the timeframe after the storm passes?
That's pretty reasonable, yeah, but we didn't wanna tie ourselves to it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, anything we can, again, things, we're just, I'm, I'm excited at the response from the community. There's been good feedback. Again, good, good response. Folks are taking it. I'm not sure if it, you know, is due to the, you know, the media coverage in Houston and everything that has happened there. There's, there's really been some heightened awareness, and folks are really taking it serious. And I would, I would just say, stay the course, stay diligent, and, and don't let your guard down. And, again, if, if in the end, it's, you know, next week, and we're all, we're all doing well, and it all, it's been a great exercise, and it's, it's not a bad thing to dust off these plans and, and go through it, so, okay?
Yeah, the Florida League had a conference call last night with Governor Scott, and it was, I thought it was very interesting.
I did too.
He offered up pretty much everybody's cell phone number, including his and all of his immediate people underneath him, as well as the state Emergency Management Director.
Oh, yeah.
So, we have all of their numbers. A lot of questions were asked, particularly about the trim notices and the budget hearings. And his plan is to talk to DPR so that we have some relief if, if, you know, the hearings can't be held on the date that was published on the trim notice, that the budget still could be submitted to the state. A lot of people had questions about that. They were very concerned about any fuel stations that do not have gas. They wanna be notified. They're working with the retailers to keep supplies coming into the state, as, as well as water. They, the Lake O issue was very hot because they are starting to release water. So, people on both sides are very concerned about that, but they do have about four feet. They can go to 17. They can go to 18, but when they go to 17, that's concerning. So, there were a lot of questions from Clueston and Sanibel. And one of the interesting questions was the mayor of Key West told the governor that TSA told them that they're pulling out of the airport tomorrow. So, there were people that already had flights on Friday who were planning to leave, and they were being told that their flights were being canceled because of TSA. So, that was interesting, and he's, he's, he's gonna work on that. A couple of smaller cities asked about tree trimming issues and storm water cleanouts, and they were receptive, so they were gonna get back to them. And he basically said that any county that has an evacuation at all will have a shelter. So, even if you leave your home county, you should be able to shelter somewhere in another county if, if you've decided to evacuate or been told to evacuate. So, I would have to say, overall, it was very reassuring, and he, he fielded a lot of questions, anybody who wanted to ask. And I thought it was very helpful. So, they're in touch with us, and they may call for another one. I don't know, but it was, it was very reassuring, I would say.
I would agree with you completely. I participated in the call as well. And, again, 27 years doing this, and what I'll tell you is I've never seen the level of commitment that was expressed last night. It, it was just great. It really was, so. And even on the fuel, they addressed that. That's been a, a big topic. Folks, you know, gas stations are out of, it's really a distribution issue more than supply, it seems to be, so, you know, they, they don't have more trucks. They're, they're, they're filling, they're, they're getting it in. And I think, once this initial surge of folks leave, I think we're gonna have our fuel up, you know. What happens after the storm may be a different, a different scenario, but it is more of a distribution issue. But the support from the state was refreshing.
And they did waive all the tolls, and they did waive the driving requirements so that the trucks can get here. Maybe not as safe as they're supposed to, but, you know, they're, they're coming, so.
Does anything else? Just reach out to me, and I'll be glad.
He's got everybody's cell phone number, so.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we will continue our updates. As you can see internally, we're doing what we need to do. And we will continue to communicate to the community. And we will be out there, we will be visible. And we'll continue on.
I have one quick thing. Probably for Lisa, do we have any way to communicate to the realtors to pull signs for the weekend? And I've noticed a huge proliferation of commercial signs being posted in random places over the past few days. There are several on 41 right now.
Those, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, Lisa Hanan, interim zoning official. I noticed those myself over the weekend. We'll make sure, I'm sure our code officer should have already pulled them. If not... If not, we'll make sure they get pulled. And I can send an email to the Board of Realtors and ask them if they have any large signs or anything.
But even the ones, the small ones, they have spikes on the bottom of them. If they go flying, they're going to be projectiles that could really cause damage.
Okay, I can send an email and, and ask them to remove the signs during the, during, you know, before the event.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, next, you know why we don't have anybody here?
Why?
Hardly. We don't have any quasi judicial public hearings.
Good point.
But we do have ordinance resolutions. We have three regarding PACE. So if anybody would like to speak on the three resolutions regarding the PACE program, now would be the time. Come to this podium, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Far be it from me to pass up an opportunity here. I am Terry Stark. I work for Y Green Energy Fund. We are the Green Corridor PACE District. That is the third resolution that you have in front of you. First of all, I appreciate you taking up this matter. I just wanted to report on how Charlotte County has done since they passed. As of the end of last month, they, we have financed and completed 74 projects worth a little over $1.1 million. By the way, 80% of those projects have been for wind hardening. So it's been roofs and windows and doors. So that literally is what, what Charlotte County, for the most part, has been using for, for upgrades. The average project has been about $15,000. But again, that's what, exactly what we would expect when you're replacing roofs and windows. So anyway, that's, that's the quick update. I just wanted to tell you, I'm here if you have any questions, so.
Thank you.
I have one. What kind of percentage do you charge for your loans?
The, the average loan goes off somewhere between six and seven and a half right now, depending on how long it is.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Someone asked me that question the other day. I thought, I, that's what I was thinking it was, I just wanted to make sure.
By, by the way, this, this may be of interest. We have asked our team that certifies contractors that for the next month and a half at least in Southwest Florida, that we slow down the process, because we want to make sure we are certifying legitimate contractors and not make any mistakes there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on these, comments on these resolutions regarding PACE? Seeing none, we will move to the first one.
This is a resolution and ordinance of the City of Pontagorda that I will read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Pontagorda, Florida, expressing the city's support and intention to create within its boundaries the Renew PACE Program, a voluntary program providing interested property owners with the opportunity to finance energy efficiency, renewable energy, and wind resistance improvements on their property by repayment through non-adverum assessments on their property tax bill, authorizing the mayor of Pontagorda to execute an interlocal agreement with the Florida Green Finance Authority for administration of the Renew PACE Program in the City of Pontagorda, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you.
Mikhail Finkel for the record. This summary will actually apply to the, to the next three. We have the three ordinances, they're three separate companies. City Council, I believe, received a presentation and discussed this back in the April and May timeframe. So these are the ordinances to join in and implement so that PACE can be provided in the City of Pontagorda. They mimic what Charlotte County has already adopted. There were a couple questions as to why there are other cities involved. From reading the ordinance, I gather that either one city or multiple cities can enter inter, interlocal agreement to create these districts. And then we are joining on by signing the membership agreements in, in limited terms to those districts. And then those districts have contracted with the different companies to implement the programs. There is no cost to the city to participate in this. Some of them, they may ask you to enter into agreements with our local property appraiser, tax collectors for the implementation of the special assessments, but there's no cost to the city for the program.
Any questions? We need a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 3C1.
Second.
Second? We have motion, second, to approve 3C1. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. 3C2.